All right. I'll call this meeting to order. We will begin with the pledge allegiance invocation. The pledge we lead by Kelsey Marzett, Kelsey Marzett. Our new employee in the IT, in the planning building inspection.
She's hiding behind the post.
Already learned where to hide at your building. And Heather Street will lead us in a please stand and Heather within lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for allowing us to meet here today. We ask your presence here in the midst of this meeting and allow the decision makers to make their focus on Smith County to the best of their ability and allow the decisions that are made to be pleasing to you as well. And let all things that happen make Smith County a stronger and happier place to be. We ask your travel mercies as we travel home this afternoon. Ask you to lead, guide, and direct us and protect us and give us your guidance throughout everything that we say and do and let everything that we do be pleasing unto you. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I don't know of any amendments we have to the agenda. So let's just head right into public hearing. CDBG general public hearing. Sean, you want to hand that?
Sure. Yes, sir. I'll read the notice first. Smith County Board Supervisors will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 23rd, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. or soon thereafter. As may be heard in the boardroom of the Smith County Office Building, 121 Bagley Circle. Marion Virginia to solicit public input on local community development in relation to the Community Development Block grant funding for a project in our county. Information on the amount of funding available, the requirements to low, for low benefit, on benefit to low to moderate income persons, eligible activities and plans to minimize displacement and provide displacement assistance as necessary will be available. Citizens will also be given the opportunity to comment on the county's past use of CDBG funds. All interested citizens are urged to attend. For additional information, contact Clay Williams, Assistant County Administrator for Development at (276) 783-3298. Comments and grievances can be submitted in writing to Smith County at 121 Bagley Circle, Suite 100, Marion Virginia, 24354 by email. Pharvey@SmithCounty.org or by fax to (276) 783-9314. All emails, written comments, and faxes must be received by 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 23rd, 2022 in compliance with the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this public hearing should contact Clay Williams, ADA Coordinator, at (276) 706-8315 at least 24 hours prior to the public hearing, according to the order of the Smith County Board Supervisors. Shawna, Smith County Administrator. So this hearing is where the county is looking at ideas or funding opportunities for very various projects, whether it be housing or water sewer utility projects, community development projects. The requirements by the state include two public hearings. One, general public hearing that basically says if there's any project out there that the county citizens think we should look at and let it be known, tell us, let it, give us your ideas. And then the second public hearing closer to February of next year, when the applications are due, we'll have one on a specific project. We're considering, you know, as you know, we're working on the water study. We're also looking at some sewer projects or I'm not sure of housing projects that are on our radar, but if any pop up, we'll be glad to look at it. But this is just a general hearing this evening.
Did anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Anyone here wishing to speak on the subject? I'd like to make one comment. I think we might want to consider when we get down to the ditty gritty, some of these projects that we've had out in the rural part of the county like Conor Rock and Nevo and so forth, where we're trying to help some of the, some of the Rutan clubs and community clubs. If there's anything there, we might be able to use one of these grants for it. That'd be ideal.
Conor Rock would be a great, the water system there would be a great project.
I just not forget about them when it comes down to that point. So that was just my two cents worth, inflated by nickel and whatever. Any other comments from anybody on the board? Hearing none, I guess I'll close the public hearing.
And no action necessary requested for that?
Right. Second item is the budget amendment.
Okay. The public hearing notice pursuant to section 15.2 dash 2507 of the Code of Virginia notices hereby given that the Board Supervisors of Smith County will hold a public hearing in the boardroom of Smith County Administration Building at 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia on Thursday, June 23rd, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. or soon thereafter to receive comments on the proposed amendments of the budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. This amendment will increase the fiscal year 2021, 2022 adopted budget by $1,632,194 for additional school board funds and additional Comprehensive Services Act, CSA state funding match. The new total budget amount will be $107,403,747. All interested persons may express their views by email at PHarvey@SmithCounty.org. Prior to the meeting, written comments may also be mailed to the County Administrator, Shawna, 121 Bagley Circle, Suite 100, Marion, Virginia, 24354 or by fax to (276) 783-9314. All emails, written comments, and faxes must be received by 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 23rd, 2022. A copy of the proposed budget amendment is available for public review by contacting the County Administrator's office. Anyone having questions regarding the above may contact the County Administrator's office at (276) 783-3298, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. In compliance with provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact Clay Williams, ADA Coordinator, at (276) 706-8315 at least 24 hours prior to the hearing, by order of the Board Supervisor of Smith County, Virginia, Shawna, County Administrator. So we do have a final budget amendment for your consideration. The two, in your packet, you have a draft resolution and behind it is the exhibit that shows what those funds are. So that, the line share of the budget amendment, 1.6, well, 1.5 million dollars, sorry, is connected to the state ESRA funds for the school system and the remaining is a final budget amendment for the CSA. Normally, or a lot of times when CSA ended their fiscal year, they would have basically just rolled up over some of the costs to the next year. Since we had a budget hearing coming anyway, we decided to go ahead and zero out the CSA this year. So we did add that 132,000 on top of the, the school board's 1.5 million request. Dr. Carter's here to answer any questions, if you have any as well.
Hi, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. No, no, not this one. I have a question on the other request. Anyone else have any questions? Anyone wishing to speak at the public hearing? This is a public hearing, isn't it?
No.
Do you remember in public hearings, people speak? Well, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the school. Now, I believe I will entertain a motion to go ahead and vote on this, either up or down, but since we're this close to the year end, I think we need to get it done, so.
I move to waive the.
Reading of the rules?
Yeah. Approve the motion to approve the budget.
Okay. We have a motion to waive the rules and go ahead and approve the budget amendment, so that's approved.
This covers more than the school system, right?
School system and CSA.
And CSA.
Yes, sir.
Page seven of our packet is what we're, we're actually looking at 30,000. We're looking at 30,881 dollars of local money. The rest of the money is ESRA funds or CSA state funds. Did I have a second on that?
No.
Okay. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have to take a voice vote, if you don't mind, since we got electronics.
Absolutely. Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call is absent.
All righty. So that motion passes. While we're here, and to get rid of Mr. Carter, we have a request on the, at your seat there for a budget transfer from a school system. You want to come forward, talk about it?
Sure, sure.
I have the one question, and it's just curiosity on my part, and I think Shawna answered it.
Okay.
But we're transferring from facilities to food service.
We are.
There's no one in the building eating.
There's not. So what happens is we're on, we're, it's all reimbursement based and we're, we just finished our summer school payroll for our cafeteria staff. And we also have to make our July and August payrolls for our cafeteria staff. So that will clear us through July and August payrolls.
See, I asked the question, get a good answer.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? You have the, I think we have it. Well, what we're, what his request is a $60,000 transfer from operation and maintenance to food service. Any other questions for that? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, excuse me, we're going to have to do a voice, a roll call again.
This is exclusive to the school system.
School system only. Yep. Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Abstaining.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call is absent.
All righty, I believe you can make your transfer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Presentations, after-school program update.
We have Paige Weaver here to.
Paige, right.
Right. Weaver is from Pulaski, sir. Too many pages.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This year, we started a after-school program. We have six, total of seven elementary schools. We could not work with Sapporo Elementary because they already have a grant for after-school care, leaving the remaining six schools. We operated in four of those schools. In your packet, you should have all of the year-end data and info. We got a lot of praise and appreciation and several hugs from parents who are so thankful for this service. We have one particular parent that stopped me in the middle of Food City the other day asking because of preschool, her children may be split at two schools. Can, can, can we still enroll both of them? Sure, bring them on. So there's a lot of gratitude and appreciation from the parents as well as the staff. Enrollment just kept climbing as the school year progressed. We did have one, towards the end of the year, we did drop down just a few kids because of the end-of-the-year SOL remediation. And between the two remediations where they needed to be. I was lucky, I had a very solid, responsible group of staff. I had no worries whatsoever. I knew that if there was an issue, they were going to contact me. If it was something they could handle, they did so and then let me know. They were amazing. As far as ramping things up for the upcoming school year, I drafted and Shawna and I looked, looked over just as an extra set of eyes, a brochure that went home to every elementary school student, letting them know that, one, we will be having it, you know, again this upcoming year, but also giving them the information, the amounts, the dates, all of that stuff ahead of time. So for those that like to plan, I've already sent out applications. I did a parent survey towards the end of the year and they, several requested social media. So I set up a Facebook group so that we could share announcements, so I could get out the brochure and the application and just any pertinent information. And right now, we're up to 50-some members. But overall, we have had an amazing first year. I never would have dreamed that it would have gone as smoothly or as well being a first-out-of-the-gate program. One of the things that we really could, our biggest need on air end are games and activities for bad weather. There are days that it is not all that warm outside. We try to get them out, to get, burn off that energy as much as possible. Depending on the schools, some of them have access to the gym. It depends on if high school sports are practicing in those gyms. But we, on days that it's raining or really cold, you've got a group of kids for two and a half hours and homework and snack, may take up 45 minutes of it. But we are trucking through and just, we've had such a successful year.
And that's right, I will tell you, I had two phone calls from principals this year that stated that their, their parents appreciate the program and it really bailed them out of their jobs to, when they had to work over and things like that, so. And also Sapporo Elementary next year because their Century 21 grant runs out. It ran out Saturday, didn't it? They actually had school Saturday. So that was the last day of their grant, so.
So this year, we're looking at seven schools.
Find time to find out, isn't it?
Hi, I'm Ping.
Better than, first of all, all this.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll throw out there, the one thing that, when we were putting this together this time last year, we didn't, there's a program in Marion at the, at the Wellness Center. We didn't want to take them out of business. We just wanted to support in addition, and I think if you see those numbers, you know, Marion and Oak Point, they're not huge numbers. I expected Chilhalla to be the largest user and they were. So I've, I've been personally pleased with the overall program. And I appreciate Paige stepping up when she did, because it was, we didn't give her much time to prepare.
It is, and by the way, the parents like to sign.
Yeah. Being the accountant in the group, I have a couple of questions on cash flow.
Okay.
And collections.
Okay.
You know, we have, like, you averaged towed kids in September '27 and you had eight employees.
Right.
Did you pretty well cover costs or, I mean, thought it was in it to make money or anything, but how did that turn out?
We got close.
Very close.
It didn't cover completely, but you know, it was, it was close enough for me to make it a worthwhile venture. It was something worth, worth doing.
Any family completely take advantage of us or do we, I mean, I understand a month here and a month there, but.
Surprisingly, no.
Okay.
That was one of my biggest fears getting into it because money's money. But surprisingly, I built, real quickly built relationships with most of the parents. The first month or so, I see parents come and going, okay, she's here, what's going on? Eventually, it was, hi, how are you? You know, so I was out and about a lot. We used the Remind app. A, excuse me, a lot of parents had my personal cellphone number, which I was fine with. We had, you know, we had a couple of situations where we had one single mom who switched jobs. She had religiously paid, we kind of slid her for a couple of weeks and when she got her new paycheck, she, you know, called up plus paid, you know, the upcoming two. But overall, it worked out very well.
I can only comment on the Atkins School Program, but people in the community were really happy with it. And I understand that it helped a little bit with the scores by having homework done and some things in the classroom.
Yes.
The daily classroom improved because kids came in ready for the next day's work.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Backing up to the public hearing we did for the CB, CDB grant, and I realize that's a little bit away, but is that something that could be applied for to help some funding, a portion of the funding towards this program?
The CDBG grant, they only fund tangible items like construction and water sewer or housing. They don't do programs like an after-school program. That's one thing that they don't do. But, you know, we can certainly look at other funding opportunities.
I guess I was kind of thinking back to the comment about in bad weather activities, use it to build some sort of a structure for internal.
Under, under roof.
Under roof, whether it be a small outdoor garage type thing that would house X number of people. Not a full-blown gymnasium, of course, but maybe something like a community room or such. I don't know, just thinking out loud.
Something we could look at, for sure. We'll add it to the list.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, just from my experience in seeing at Oak Point Elementary, you know, a lot of the kids who attend after school, they really enjoy it. It would really surprise you at the number of children that leave school every day and don't want to leave. So hopefully, getting their word out, you know, as much as we can would help increase those numbers. I think the children know, but maybe the parents, some of them don't know, you know, as good as they should and it's just, it takes time.
Right.
So, but.
And that was one reason I wanted to get the brochure, the application out as the kids went home versus when they come back, the parents come in at the beginning of the school year, if they have more than one kid, they're trying to get everything acclimated and that's not top priority. So I was hoping that this kind of would.
You know, it, it just really spoke to me, I guess, in the fact that there were so many children, because the ones on parent pickup, I'd talk to them every day just about. So, and I'll ask them how their day was, if they're ready to go home. And sometimes, I know, stay at school, you know. So, you know, hopefully, we will see those numbers increase.
Right.
But it's been a good program, just from what I've seen. Thank you for all you did.
You're welcome. Y'all have a good evening.
We're up to the, we're up to the minutes of the previous meeting. In your packet is, is the minutes attachment for. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
I was absent, so I abstained.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
I was also absent, so I'll abstain.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call is absent. 402.
Okay, so it passes then. Thank you. We're up to the citizens' time. Mr. Watson, here it. No comment. Okay. I'll close citizens' time. Committee reports, Budget Committee. Sean, you want to read that one for me?
Be happy to. Had Budget Committee on Thursday, June 16th at 9:00 a.m. and Mr. Sturgill, Mr. Atkins were present. Ms. Deal was, was absent and we had some staff members there. We had a few discussion topics. The first of, Mr. Richardson, Commissioner of Revenue, was at the meeting to talk about personal property tax options. As you may have heard, values of used cars are going up in the NADA pricing guides, which is what the Commissioner of Revenue uses. Mr. Richardson reported that was about 35% increase over current year and he had provided four options for the board to consider. One, the do nothing option. Two, you could increase the PPT RA rate, but that does create some auditing issues. Three would be provide a discount on PPT, personal property tax. And that's basically instead of assessing on the 100%, it's, you're assessed it's 80% or 70% of value. This has some difficulties with our current financial system. He is, the item, or option four was to adjust the rate specific to vehicles only. The General Assembly passed a law this year that had a sunset, I think is a two-year law, three-year law, that you can tax vehicles differently than any other personal property. That was what he's been working for in his office. It's a, I think it's, there's still a lot to look at to see what, what, what option we look, we consider or recommend. But Mr. Atkins, Chairman, did suggest waiting for the final budget numbers. At this time, the state had not approved the final budget and Mr. Sturgill agreed. I will say, just in commentary, we have some of those final budget numbers. We don't have, have everything yet still, so we're, we're still working on that. The Commissioner's office is going to work on, give it some, put some numbers to percentages if we go, we're currently at $2.30. If we go to $2.10, this is how much revenue, $2, this is how much revenue, $1.75, this is. So that, that will be provided at a future Budget Committee meeting. Mr. Richardson also talked about the possibility of adding a new position to his office in the coming year. He has some retirements coming and also expects additional funding from the comp board for an additional position. So we are looking at the, the budget with that in mind for any amendments. Looking at FY '23 appropriations, that was the next item on the agenda for the first quarter appropriations. We do have a total appropriation request of $29,131,488 and you'll see the breakdown. I did add that there's going to, will need to do a supplemental appropriation in July or August for the Sheriff's Office Fund and the Commonwealth Attorney Fund for, once we know what the final numbers in those accounts are. A motion was made by Chilhalla District Supervisor Michael Sturgill to recommend approving the FY '23 budget appropriations for the county in the amount of $29,131,488. And Atkins District Supervisor Charlie Atkins seconded that motion. It was unanimously approved. That is a recommendation from committee.
Okay, committee recommendation, any question? Committee recommendation, any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the roll call.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call is absent.
Sounds like we have a appropriation for the first three months.
The next item we talked about was the FY '22 budget transfer request as we look at finaling out, finishing up the budget for this year. Few departments, we do have some issues with fuel. That was in solid waste into water sewer, just mostly because they are the ones that use the most fuel. The Sheriff's Office was able to absorb a lot of his overage with, with some other items. So after discussion, a motion was made by Chilhalla District Supervisor Michael Sturgill to recommend transferring $45,000 from supplemental appropriations to the solid waste fuel line and transferring $3,500 from supplemental appropriations to water sewer fuel line. Atkins District Supervisor Charlie Atkins seconded the motion. It was unanimously approved. So that is another recommendation from committee. I will say that I'm hoping that the upcoming budget, we have put enough buffer in there for the, for the, for the, for next year, but I guess fuel prices are yet to be seen.
Yep, that's a shot in the dark.
It is.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, but also, because I know in the landfill side of, tractor and trailer side going down, we can't do anything to solve that. When in places that we can double up, maybe drop off a truck and try to cut some to help, would deeply be appreciated.
Actually, did have that conversation last week when, after you and I talked. Hopefully, that's.
I see a lot of people in one vehicle going 100 different ways. I think we need to rethink it now, it feels so high.
I agree.
Any other comments? Hearing none, call for the vote on this one.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
All righty, sounds like we've done that.
Yep, and then the final thing we talked about for the, this current year, presented some, some ideas on debt service payments, on ways we can save money in future. You have to go ahead and pay some debt down now, this year, since we have a, we're, we're in a good position. a good position this, at the end of the fiscal year. Following discussion of the various options, the following motion was made by Atkins District Supervisor Charles Atkins to recommend paying off the BBNT bond related to solid waste in the school board buses, as well as the John Deere financial lease related to the transfer station loader. Chilhau District Supervisor Michael Sturgill seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved. We do have those numbers. The loader is $37,079.
I'm sorry.
Thirty, seventy, shoot, $73,079, and then the BBNT was $43,000, $44,000.
And that will actually free up some money in the budget we're about, we just adopted. We had budgeted payments on those two notes that if we pay it off now, it's approximately $60,000 already paid. So, any other questions, discussions, or comments? Hearing none, that is a committee recommendation. Would you do a roll call vote, please?
Sir, Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wadner?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
All righty, sounds like we're all in agreement on that. That's, that's just good use of our funds, what it boils down to. And that takes care of the Budget Committee. Solid Waste Committee. Let me find my spot here. I'm cheering on that one also. You want to?
Absolutely. I will say that this is a topic of discussion for many folks, but let's see, Friday, June 7th, June 17th, we did have a solid waste committee. All three members were present, and one agenda item was the Bristol landfill pending closure options. We've been in conversation with the City of Bristol, and I understand, at the time of the committee meeting, we had not been formally notified by the City of Bristol, but as you, everyone knows in the newspapers, they've been reporting that they are looking to cease operations. I did advise the county, that the county doesn't need to wait until that notice is there, and I know that Mr. Williams has been in contact with operators of the Echo Smart landfill in Blountville. That's about 12 miles further down the interstate, a little bit off the interstate from the Bristol landfill. That is really our best contingency emergency option. We were able to get some cost figures, and if we sign a contract before July 1st, the tipping fee would be set $35 a ton. After July 1st, it would, the increase, it increases to $45 a ton. Comparatively, the City of Bristol currently charges $17.30 a ton, which is set to increase to $17.55 in October, should that contract continue. We had a lot of discussion about additional options that need to be explored, whether it's a county-owned incinerator or anything, anything else, anything should be on the table at this point. Following discussion, the motion was made by North Fork District Supervisor Phil Stevenson to recommend approving the emergency contract with EcoSafe landfill located in Blountville for an agreed upon price of $35 a ton. And Southwood District Supervisor Roscoe Call seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved as a recommendation from committee. And I'll say that this is just an emergency fix, short-term fix. We'll still need to work through the RFP process to get a longer-term solution and, you know, give us time to look at any other options that might be out there.
And I'd like to add, it has no minimum. In other words, if we don't take it, if we do not take any land, any refuge to the landfill, we have no cost.
Yep.
It's not where we have to guarantee $100,000. It's if we don't use it, we don't pay for anything, so.
I will say, just today, we were, we were given an email, the letters are in the mail, but they're going, the City of Bristol is going to cease taking outside trash September, after September 9th. They're not taking anything after September 9th. So I expect to continue using Bristol, of course. Until then, we're looking at plans for sending one truck all day to go to Blountville to try and get some costs, how much of an increase that that cost is going to be. Around, at the end of the day, we're going to have to look at increasing our tipping fees to cover this, because our costs are going to double. I don't think our tipping fees need to double, but they will, I think, we will need to put together a business plan to figure out how much we do need to increase it. But that'll be a future conversation.
And the motion right now is just to sign the contract, to get us a spot, is what it amounts to.
Can I ask a question? Do the towns, when they do their trash, do they come to our landfill?
Yes, sir. Every, all trash from the county comes to the landfill.
Transfer station.
Any other questions?
I have one. And you may have heard of it, but the contract with Eco.
EcoSmart.
Smart. Is it for a set time, or is it just?
It's a monthly, monthly rate, basically. They're saying for $35. I think we can get a cheaper rate if we do an RFP and a longer-term commitment.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions?
We don't have any other choices, no other choice whatsoever on the tape.
No, right.
Which ties our hands deep.
Hearing none, I'll call for a, go for the vote.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wadner?
Yes.
Ms. Deal? Needless to say, there'll be more, several more committee meetings in the near future.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Sean, have we started looking into anything?
Not yet.
I've been looking at the incinerator options. There's, there is one in Georgia, and there's another, I want to say, in northeast Oklahoma area, the municipal solid waste. It might not be a bad idea to consider a road trip, but I'm, we're still digging before we make any travel plans. But there are out there.
Has Clint checked Virginia rigs to see whether?
That's what he's working on, to find out the permitting process.
I knew it'd been early, I was just being curious.
Yeah, because if we get all our ducks in a row, it's going to take two or three years to get that.
The permitting, yeah.
Permitting and all ready to go.
Oh, yeah, but at least we're looking sensible.
Yeah.
If you have an incinerator, is that all self-contained? Would it have to be removed outside of the Smith County?
You would still haul the, I'd expect you'd still haul the ash off, but I'd say a ton of ash would be probably 100 tons of trash. I mean, it would, you'd still be hauling something to the landfill. You might be able to use the ashes as daily cover for a landfill.
Might be able to get permitted to dump them in our own site.
Right.
There's just all kinds of stuff we've got to look into. The biggest concern is our quality control right there.
So that would position us to be the central collection of refuge and turn it from solid into an ash component. Communities, locales will be coming, instead of going to Bristol, potentially coming here.
Could.
Generating revenue.
We can turn it into a business plan. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, does the, do the incinerators capture the gas?
The.
So you can sell the gas, whatever you get out of insinuating, incinerating trash, can you capture that gas?
Well, the one in, I think the one, I think it's the one in Georgia, actually, they produce electricity. So you could have, if you locate it close to a transmission station.
Yeah, sell it to E.P. or something.
That was a big sale of them for years, and I don't know what happened at all, just died out.
Yeah, it went away. I've not heard about it.
Did you get involved?
Yeah.
We're probably hoping for something, it's going to be a heartbreak.
Well, the other thing we talked about, I think, I think it'd be a good time to discuss it here, we talked about the trash we do get in, especially from industry, the pallets and some other items. If we can do something to get the pallets separated out, or, there's people who want pallets, there's people wanting to get rid of the pallets. If we can put the two together and not have them come to our landfill, that would be a big savings, too, for every ton of those. Two different groups, we would benefit, and everyone who's getting it would benefit, plus everyone who's getting rid of it would benefit. Three groups would benefit from it, so.
I think that's something we need to work on real quick.
Yeah, so we're looking at all that. We had quite a discussion in committee, so I just wanted y'all to know, we just, we talked, talked a lot of trash.
We open any ideals if y'all got any.
Y'all get a new name for trash. I guess that was it for the solid waste committee, but I did want you to know that we, we took it serious and talked a lot of options. Moving now to the Rich Valley Fair request. We had the public hearing. We need to, you vote, any discussion before we go for a vote?
I'm not opposed against it. I'm a little put out that nobody showed up for the Rich Valley Fair every time we discussed this or had a public meeting. You know, work we have a question. And it's an old fire, and we approve it every year, but I'm going to throw that in there anyway. I think if you ask for permit, y'all could at least stand up here and protest.
Well, they usually do. They usually have three, Curly and three or four others are usually sitting out in the audience, but I haven't seen any of them this year, so. Sean scared away.
I guess so.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to move to approve.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Call, Mr. Uh?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wadner?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Sounds like we have a Rich Valley Fair, as far as we're concerned. Moving on to new business, the Enterprise Zone request from Commissioner of Revenue.
So you have a letter in your packet there, at the last page of the packet, or last pages, summarizing the, this year's Enterprise Zone request, and that's in the amount of $8,867.69 for your consideration. And it does, I will say, it represents an investment of $1,198,336 in the site.
Okay. Because I believe that the eight thousand shows up anywhere on that.
I did have to call for that number.
Okay. Didn't you say it was again? Okay, any further discussion?
And just to be clear, what was actually renovated? I mean, I'm sorry, a little late to the party here, but what?
It was a building out on Main Street, East Main Street of Marion. I think this is the last year for, it's the building right in front of Food Line, the little doctor's office area. Is there one, just below Arby's?
It was right behind, right to the west of Arby's.
West, yeah.
For kids that play therapy and Ellis Home Oxygen and Royal Opiate.
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
Probably included the old laundromat there, too, that's now a, I think it's a beauty salon.
It's Royal Opiate, and then there's a nail salon, Air Key.
But anyway, they qualify for it, to who we, the grain agency. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Uh?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wadner?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You'll be seeing it in your sleep tonight, you know. All the most important, we're down to the report from the county attorney. He's been quiet all night, him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like to be quiet most of the time. Not a whole lot, I mean, I'm working on stuff, so there is stuff going on, and I send emails to Sean occasionally with some information. I shared some stuff with him about the landfill contract, some talking points when that first came up. I think I sent you guys an update on the opioid lawsuit. So there's money expected to be coming, I don't know when that's going to come. It's a lot of people to pay, and they got a distribution person in charge of distributing that. So hopefully by the end of the summer or sometime in the fall, we'll get some kind of payment with some instruction of what's coming or what's to come. We've been working on a couple things with the Sheriff's Office, Blue Line contract with the radar, I can't remember, photo enforcement is what that is. I think Don's working on that with Sean. Recently, the sheriff has asked us to look at a contract about transporting.
TDOs.
TDOs, yeah. So we're trying to figure that out, what the purpose of that contract is, and trying to keep the sheriff from being obligated to do something new, is their view at the moment. We're still trying to learn about that and get more information about that. The Morrison Building, we revised the plat, there was some information on there that had to be taken off, we sent that to Richmond. They responded today or yesterday, sometime recently, that they thought it was okay. There was some discussion about maintenance of the parking lot, of the parking areas. We come in, they're hanging on to that little parking area, and then we, they proposed a split on maintenance, which I think we're okay with, we talked about before. It should, hopefully it's minimal maintenance, you know, it's just us driving on it and them parking. So I imagine that would happen sometime soon, but we're moving pretty slow on that. We hope that that will happen soon. Everything's ready to go. The other thing that we probably need to do, which I mentioned to Sean, is talk to Mr. Campbell about extending the time period on the legislation on using the steam or the heat, just to have it extended, so if we can't get it done in two years, you know, we'll be able to have some more time. We don't think that's going to be an issue. It's in the legislation, so we just want to be safe and have it in the legislation if we can get it in there. The zoning stuff, Quail Run, we're still waiting on return of service from Russell County. It's been about a month now. I need to follow up on that and see if the court can tell me anything new. Reba Presley, we sent that out for service, came back not found, so I guess they went to the house we thought she was in, and they said she doesn't live here. So we got to get on that service train again and figure out how to find her. Churchland Drive, I've still got to talk to the people in New Orleans, find out who, what the family tree is and where people are. I've called them once, and then I just haven't gone back to try to follow up with them. The other zoning stuff going on, the Gollan lawsuit, the judge issued an order essentially dismissing, we did, we filed a motion to reconsider. This is Jennifer Rohr, the VACO attorney. And they had a hearing on that, the judge made a decision, and they dismissed one or two of his claims, the United States Constitution violation claims, and something else was dismissed. But then everything else is still proceeding forward of whatever's left in that lawsuit. And they're defending that, VACO's defending that for us. I assume, I'm not sure what the next step is in that case, maybe some discovery, I can follow up and find out. The truck stop litigation, air counsel hired by VACO is Jim Quinn, he filed a demur at the end of May. That email said he was going to set, try to get a hearing set on his demur, but I don't know if that's happened. I've not heard anything more from him. So he either has a hearing date set and didn't tell us, or he still needs to do that. There was an old lien at, an old water line easement that we paid for and a little certificate to take, and for one of the projects a long time ago for a gentleman named Boone. And the clerk was asking for an order, he accepted that payment, whatever that payment was. So we, I did the order and submitted it to John Graham, he's going to try to get him to sign it. So that finally got done, it's been on my list a really long time, and I know they've called. So that's all I have to report right now. I mean, there's a lot of plates spinning here for Smith County, and we work on it, and when Sean says, hey, this is urgent, we try to get on it really fast, so. I'm happy to try to answer questions if you have any.
Our landing strip, is that all dead in the water now, or?
Uh, no. That is still ongoing, but it's idle at the moment. So we responded to that lawsuit. The initial attorney who filed it, I can't remember what firm he was in, he left that firm and someone else in that firm took over. And we filed, I guess what we call a demur, I think, we responded to the lawsuit and filed something, but I don't think there's been a hearing set on that.
So does that hold them up from building?
It does not, not at this point. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless there's other questions.
All righty, any questions? Scott, thank you for your. Report from the county administrator, fresh back from vacation.
Well, I've already done mine, so I don't have anything else to report. Well, I've already done mine, so I don't have anything else to report.
Well, I did it for you.
You did, thank you, I don't have to worry about it.
All right, supervisor comment time. It's the only way it can be fair. Lori, you're first.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you all letting me join virtually this evening, um, I just, I have a couple things I wanted to bring up, one is in regards to an outstanding bill for, uh, firefighter Dogwoods, who passed away coming up on two years, and wanted to be, um, the insurance pay, emergency rig is that basically everything except forty-four hundred dollars of funeral bill, um, so I wanted to reach out to the board, I believe, after the many years of service that firefighter Woods gave to this community, uh, the least we can do is, is pay his, uh, you know, expense of an amount of forty-four hundred dollars, and I believe after a conversation with Mr. Beck, we do have that funding in supplemental appropriations, uh, so I'd like for us to discuss that, um, and make a motion to pay that bill.
I couldn't hear him, Mr. Chairman, who did she say?
She made a motion to pay the bill for, um, Dog, the firmer that was, that died at the, uh, the Applewood Law &amp; Fire Department firmer that died about two years ago, the state and federal paid all the. State, state and federal paid all the bills except the funeral home expense, um, and they're asking that we go ahead and pay that, that we can get, that they can get reimbursed by the state, or, I guess it's the federal government. Forty, did you say forty-four hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
Four, it's, it's four, uh, forty-three ninety-seven, um, and, and change, but, yeah, this, this will be the last payment due for the funeral expenses.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those, uh.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
All righty, I believe we, I mean, it's a shame to have to wait two years to, to get some of this resolved, because it's bad enough the family lost someone, but then they have to keep raking this over the coals, a little bit ridicu- I know we had that same problem four or five years ago, when the officer got killed with the ice. They just look for an excuse, and I, I, I'm sorry, uh, at a time like it's not, not a time to be trying to find reasons. Okay, anything else, Lori, is that it?
No, that's all, I appreciate you all so much, for everything you do, and supporting with this, during this time, we can finally close the door on that and get it taken care of, so you all have a good evening, be safe going home.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stevenson, you're next. This two times in a row.
I'm trying to do better. Believe me, I had enough to say during the week about the state shutting everybody down, so I got, I got nothing to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sturgill?
I'm good also.
And, uh, I, I got two things, uh, uh, just for y'all's information, uh, I attended the regional jail meeting Tuesday, and we did pass a budget with Bristol being a member of the regional jail, I think they are obligated for two hundred, the number, don't quote me on it, about roughly two hundred and twelve beds, and, uh, so that budget was built with that in place. We passed the budget, and right now, don't think you mind me telling, the minimum refund we're gonna get is seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for last year from the regional jail, so, uh, uh, they have to finalize, but they said that was the minimum. So, that's one I, Tuesday night, I went to, Lori and I went to the Ryba Valley Water, annual meeting, didn't have near enough air to have a meeting, no quorum present, so we didn't have the meeting. I did get a chance to talk to the fire department, and we got some things to look at there, but, uh, I, I think we, we can move forward, and I, we're, we're, we're solving some problems, we're, we're being proactive rather than waiting for things to happen, then try to figure it out, and we need to just keep moving forward with that and keep trying to work on it. And that's it for me. Mr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't think I had any comments at this time.
At least it's one person.
I felt like I gotta come up with something, I, I really didn't have anything either. You know, I, I had also, uh, interest from some of the constituents in my area, Highway sixteen and Applewood subdivision, where large water and sewer, um, since the last publication come out, uh, people has, has noticed that, um, that, that's some things we're looking at, and I've, I've explained the, the study situation and everything, I just hope that that's something that the, the state will look at and be able to help us, um, these localities, with some funding to, um, provide some of these, uh, places further out with these services. And, and I, I do also want to say, I, I'm not on the committee, but, for the waste management and, uh, for water and sewer, but, you know, I, 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 I agree with Mr. Stevenson that, you know, at, at this point, with that being shut down, coming up, you know, all options are on the table, and whatever we can work together with to come up with a good idea to, to, uh, try to do some house savings for our waste management, and, and even if it, as Mr. Ut said, uh, ends up being a business as, as far as the incinerator goes, anything we can look at to try to help the citizens and, and keep those costs down, we need to try to do. I don't have anything further, thank you all for all you do, and I want to thank the staff also, county administration for all you do, um, there's a lot of hours and, uh, time that's put in for things that, that we don't even know about, that you guys do, and we just appreciate you for all of it. Everybody be safe going home, thank you.
All righty, unless someone else has something that we need to discuss, I believe that's it for tonight. Be safe going home. See you on the fourteenth of, uh, July. That's about as late as we can have a meeting.